Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Committee of the Whole for June 12th. If you could please call the whole, Ms. Boak.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Here.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Present.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Cost?
Here.
Eight members present.
Okay, next on our agenda are the minutes for May 22nd. Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I move the minutes of May 22nd as written.
We have a motion on the minutes. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye posed passes unanimously. This is the opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment, please come up to the podium, state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council?
Two things, both related to the budget. The first is the proposed cut to parks and recreation under the city council's adjustment to the mayor's budget, and I am just going to have to trust and believe that in whatever fashion it occurs and however it takes place, that money will be restored into the budget for parks and recreation. They cannot stand to lose $1,242,196. It's just not the right thing to be doing at this time and place when you're looking at all kinds of crime and safety statistics, and one of the things that can help keep kids off the street and out of trouble is parks and recreation facilities and programming parks and the River Trail and the cemeteries even. And last, then, I know because I follow these things, but a lot of people, I believe, that voted for the millage, for the fire stations in the City Hall, or not the City Hall, but the compacts on South Washington Avenue, did not realize that in that proposal, Station 9, Fire Station 9, would be moved from its current location at Glendale to South Washington into the new facility's footprint. I do not believe that is a wise move. It takes a very functional station that has a high number of runs out of its footprint and into an area where it will be less accessible, harder to gain access to and from it, be more disruptive to the neighborhoods, and take it away from the service area that it has largely been known to deal with in the past. Most of its runs are south and east. They are not in the center part of the city. They are not in the western part of the city. Relocating that station, especially without the public being aware that that would be an outcome of their vote, is disingenuous. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time?
Thank you. And I spoke at Committee on Ways and Means about this, but with the budget being conversated about today, so I've been hearing that the 1.8 is going to be reallocated back into all of the areas that it was taken out. So I really would like for you all, while you're discussing this, to explain to the public what actually was done with the budget. So we were excited about the cuts. I remember originally it was like a 10% cut across the board. It seems to be now that there's not going to be that cut. Again, we had the conversation in Ways and Means about what our city actually needs to run. What do we need to run? Are we just throwing money back in? And again, I say, and I'll say it again here, if I'm giving a certain amount of money, I'll spend a certain amount of money. If I'm giving less, I'll spend less. I'll figure out ways to make that happen. So to be fiscally responsible as a city, we need to start taking that seriously. And then outside of that, I learned today also that Shelby Frayer was hired. The money came from council, moved into the mayor's office, and there we go. So again, and I got two minutes here, I'm going to talk on this. We end up having an issue where we're not recognizing that we have corruption going on in this office. So in all good faith, you guys moved that money over there for him to be governing that position, but with all of the spending that we see coming out of that office and all of the fraudulent spending, in my best knowledge, how would you put that position in that office to basically, it's like having, you know, the wolf watch over the sheep? And so that's really what I feel like, so like even us getting our own auditor over to council, and I say "our" because I feel like we're all family council and people, right? But us getting our own auditor just made such a huge difference this year in the budget. So you have somebody who's supposed to be finding wasteful spending, finding if we're really spending more than we need to and where all this money's coming from, but the office that's actually doing the wasteful spending is where she answers to. This is the same problem that we had when it came to discrimination, when the mayor put together the Mayor's MidAC, and MidAC was supposed to find where discrimination was, and then they wrote a report and said, "It's right in your office. That's where we found it at. Your HR department, as well as your office, are the reasons why we're having all these problems," and that report got thrown into a cupboard and lost. So I feel the same instance happens when Shelby is the one doing that out of the mayor's office. So if you guys, and it was $60,000, I believe, that you guys allocated, now it's up to over $100,000, I believe, somewhere close to 90 grand or maybe more. How is this happening? And so while you guys are talking about this budget and her job, I'm hoping that you guys get some accountability to that position. It doesn't need to be under the mayor's office. All departments need to be investigated whether or not they're overspending, period. And if, you know, from what we've seen from this mayor is that he wants to allow this behavior. He doesn't want to walk anything back. So what she's bringing forward says that you guys are overspending, I don't know that we're going to get the right answers from that. And that's because I know and truly believe that there's corruption up there. So until we actually recognize that, I don't think we're going to get true accurate numbers coming out of that office. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council at this time? Anyone else? Seeing none, we will move on in our agenda. Our first item on the agenda is the Chief Strategy Officer, and that's Shelby Frayer. For council members, just a reminder about this position. This position was created in 2019, for the budget in the 2019-20 budget. At that time, council had heard from both the financial health team as well as the unions asking us to look at hiring and creating this position. Council at the time had added an extra position in, for us, we were looking at hiring a liaison to work in our office. We had budgeted $60,000. At that time, we decided that this position was more important than our position for us. We felt that this would do more for the city. The reason for the $60,000 for allocation for this was we realized it would be almost a half a year from the time that we posted the position, hired the position, that it would be roughly around the $60,000. This position was put in the mayor's office. At the time, we also put together an ordinance that spoke to the Chief Strategy Officer. Our goal when we discussed this as a council was we were looking for a person to look through and work with all the departments, to look at the redundancies in the departments, to look at ways to save dollars, as well as to see if there were things that the departments could do to raise revenue. Unfortunately, the ordinance that we have does not outline that particular charge in here. So I just, as we're talking with Shelby and she's answering questions, I want you to know that the duties that she's doing currently are following what the ordinance has in it. So if there are things that we might want to discuss later on about making amendments to this ordinance, it's something that we can have a discussion on. With that, Shelby is going to talk to us about two items. One, she's going to talk to us about the public safety building. That's one of the things that she's been put in, part of her responsibility. And then I did ask her to talk about the strategic plan for the city and how she's been, how or if she's been working with that. So Shelby, I will turn it over to you and make sure your green light is on and we're ready to go.
How's that? Great. Thanks for having me tonight. I did pass out a couple of documents that should be in front of you, and I'll start by the map of SWAC here and the new McLaren parcels. Everyone have that in front of them. Great. So real quick, before we jump into the documents, just a quick overview. So thank you, President Wood, for kind of-
Can you pull that a little bit closer?
Yep. Thank you for kind of reminding everyone what the original kind of CSO intent was. And of course, the ordinance speaks specifically to pension and OPEB, which we've done, and I'm going to talk about here in just a minute. But my role here really with the police and fire millages after it passed in November was really to start getting contracts underway and bidding done for a construction manager, architect, owner's rep, all those types of things, as well as helping with the financing for the bond. So that's really what I have an update for today. As kind of a proactive measure, our owner's rep, River Caddis, wrote that first kind of Q1 report for everyone. I think that's in your packet. It's a four-page kind of update on where we're at with things. Really, after the millage passed in November, the team started working hard at just kind of meeting with all of the departments, identifying what needs were, how many people, how many offices, how many conference rooms, all those types of questions through each one of the departments for this particular project, and that's taken some time. There's been some give and take. Everybody can't have everything they want with this build, so we're relying on our owner's rep here to help us with those conversations with each department. So with that, we moved from kind of the planning design phase into the schematic design phase, and that's where we're at right now. So that memo that was drafted in March or so gave an update on kind of what happened between December and March. The next one will be released the first week in July. That'll be our Q2. So right at the edge of kind of the last quarter, heading right into the second. So we weren't sure how council wanted to receive information, so we figured we'd put something out. So John McGraw from River Caddis put together kind of an update memo, and we kind of plan to do that every quarter if that's acceptable for council. Certainly, if there's specific questions on construction, I'm not the construction manager, happy to get those answers or refer you back to John McGraw, our owner's rep. So with that, just real quick on the document, there were some questions about the property and the parcel in which we purchased the old McLaren parcel. So I know it's tiny, and you might have a screen that you can zoom in a little bit bigger, but you'll see on the right-hand side of the document, there's words written vertically, and there's red lines associated with that. So that first block there is the current SWAC parcel, and then that middle section is the new property we acquired, and then that property to the north is owned by, I believe, a trucking company right now. The original plan was to acquire some of that trucking parcel, and that did not happen for us. The party was unwilling to sell, and we need additional space essentially on that same lot for parking and everything else that we need for our building to be functional. So you can see by the colors on here, I'll just point out some of the highlights. I know you guys can zoom in here, but the new courthouse is kind of in a, kind of an L shape to the actual police and fire headquarters here. You'll see right in the middle, there's kind of a peach square, which is nice so that when folks have to drive up, whether they have court or going to be attending courts in lockup, whatever the situation is, there's a more secure way to enter the facility versus, you guys know now, we drive in all at the same spot and we all get in and out at the same spot. And so this kind of helps provide some safety and security for our folks. And then, of course, to the right is the new Fire Station 9 that has a separate entrance and exit here that's off to the right. Training, of course, is to the left of that, and then, of course, secured parking behind our buildings. So this is kind of the initial plan right now. There was some talk about having the building move closer to the road just for sightlines and things. Parking is tough over there, but we want to make sure we have enough parking, but also not just a sea of a parking lot that takes away from the building. So this is where we're at right now. We're still negotiating contracts for a construction manager and architect. They're well underway. I think we're pretty close, but we're just not 100% yet on those. So those are kind of our next big hurdle. So that's the map here. The next document you should have along with the update is a kind of a schedule of events. And again, this is ever-changing and free-flowing here, but right now, we're into the schematic design phase, as I mentioned.
Excuse me, Shelby. I think there was a question. Councilmember Spitzley.
Yeah. I just need a little bit more clarification on the map. I kind of figure where it is. So none of this new footprint is part of the existing SWAC? Is that what you're telling me?
It is. Yep. So the hope is, so originally, I think one of the questions was, there was a lot of speculation, did we lose the McLaren parcel? Are we not building there? We, in fact, are building McLaren. We ended up purchasing that for about $300,000 a couple months ago, so we have that property now. And in order for this plan to work, we have to tear down SWAC, that building that will be just in front of it. So this plan includes tearing down that building and building this facility.
So the, thank you for that. So the 172 total public parking, is that where SWAC will have formally been? I'm just trying to figure out spatially where I am on this.
Yeah, I can see if I can get a map of just building right now and land it to see what it looks like. I think SWAC, and I haven't pulled up a map of this building, but it overlays both the parking lot and where the new building would be right now off the road.
Okay, the new courthouse.
That's right.
All right. One more question. Is any of this footprint impacting the existing park area?
Nope. So off to the left there, you'll see there's kind of a border line there, the dark dotted line here, that's the park area.
Okay.
So we've kind of, yep, brought right up to it. There's just a detention pond in the middle.
Couple questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Has to do with, in the timing of this building, then you have to have the ovation completed to move City TV in there, and what happens with the clerk because they had been renting facilities and then started using SWAC, so there was not a rental that they had to pay in part of their budget? So how was that being?
So we have somebody within public service helping us navigate kind of what's in the building right now and what needs to move. There is some stuff in that building that probably needs to either go to a record center or just trashed. It's been kind of a throwaway spot for a long time, so that process is underway right now. We're identifying space for both the clerk and City TV for a portion of time until the ovation is ready. We have some property that the city already owns that we would potentially look at renovating to store, especially the clerk's. I know he's got some pretty temperature-controlled equipment that needs to be taken care of. So public service is helping navigate moving folks out of SWAC into either temporary facilities or permanent facilities, depending on which department.
Well, the temporary facilities for the clerk also have to be able to accommodate voters coming in and out because they vote at that location as well. Councilmember Spatafor, and then Councilmember Spitzley, and then Councilmember Hussein.
Thanks, Ms. Frayer. So looking at the, now the demolition of SWAC, was that, that wasn't part of the original sort of cost estimates, but it's, we're still maintaining under budget and still able to do all we want?
We are, yep. So the alternative was if we didn't take over that parcel and just built on the McLaren, we'd end up having to build a ramp, a parking ramp to accommodate everything, which was estimated to be between 20 and 30 million. So it's cheaper for us to demo that building. It's also really beyond its useful life and really kind of an eyesore. So it really kind of two birds, one stone in this particular case, but yes, it is cheaper to go this route than it is leaving it and building it around.
Okay. And I know you just mentioned it, but from a sightline perspective, this is about as close to the road we're going to get. I know we just adopted new code, form-based code and all that, trying to-
Yep. I know we were trying to get kind of as close to the street as we could, but it creates a problem for safety and security for parking, for our officers right behind there and court folks, of course. So this way allows enough parking in the front, but then, of course, secure parking for our staff in the back.
Thank you.
Councilmember Spitzley, then Councilmember Hussein.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to make sure I heard correctly. There are records and papers at SWAC. So there is a record retention program or schedule so that you're not throwing away vital records, even though they're old or, because I don't want people to think that when you said you're just going to throw stuff away.
Sure.
It's part of a records retention schedule, right?
That's correct. That's correct. Yeah, we're not just willy-nilly. But there are some things out there that are stored that I think could be stored either electronically or in a better spot.
Oh, sure. Thank you.
Councilmember Hussein.
So you cited the cost of potential construction of a parking rep at 20 to 30 million, is that what you said?
Correct.
So what are we thinking the demo of SWAC is going to cost?
Right now, our construction folks are estimating it to be between 400,000 and 500,000 to tear down that building. Now, I think there's going to have to be some, let me see, current SWAC demo, 394 grand is the current estimate to tear down SWAC.
Ooh, that seems low. Okay. So that seems incredibly low, just from other similar buildings, particularly when you think of age, when you think of potential environmental issues. I'm stunned by that number. Real quickly, I'm also concerned, you know, obviously, when you talk about the election unit in SWAC, that's centrally located for a reason. And so I'm hoping that whatever the plan is, that we consider access to for all citizens, we're, I have to ask this question. Was Chris Wilt, was he talked to about this, was, I think, Delisa Fontaine, Augie Martinez, because it's not just the election unit, it's not just City TV, but we also have our new 311 call center there with all six of our agents, so.
Yep. So everyone's had a chance to meet, not only with River Caddis, our owner's rep, but then also our public service team right now is identifying how much space do you actually need and what do we have that's already free and available. But for right now, we don't have a final plan on who's going where. Our goal is to get folks out potentially by December, November, December timeline. A call center is potentially easier to move than Public TV that has a lot of equipment, right? So we're trying to navigate what are your needs. It might not be perfect for a couple years until we figure out a permanent solution, but those talks are going on right now between public service and each department that's in there.
Councilmember Garza.
All right. Thank you, Council President. So two questions. With the parking on this schematic you sent us, and you know, now that we have the city's master plan and we changed the codes, how is this possible to still have parking up front? Because I know we've had businesses, especially in South Lansing, that want to have parking in the front, and they weren't allowed to by, you know, the city, by the new ways that the city's moving forward to. So how was this able to happen?
I know it's been through zoning and our EDP area for approval. They didn't have any issues with this particular design. I'm not sure of the backstory on all of that as far as why some and not the others, but I know this has gone through our process and been vetted.
Okay. And I guess the last question is, this Fire Station 9, I didn't think that was part of the original plan. It was?
It was, yep.
Okay.
Correct.
Wow. All right. That's all I have.
Councilmember Spatafor.
I might be wrong, though. I think the fire chief mentioned how this spot actually made more sense from call time, and they were actually eager about this relocation, if memory serves, but I can't remember that verbatim.
Councilmember Spitzley.
You're, Councilmember Spatafor, you're absolutely correct. Fire Station 9 is in sad need of repair. There's the heat and the air conditioning units are a hot mess. I think that there's a lot of things wrong with that building, so it makes, the fire chief was, what I recall, the fire chief was very adamant that this was part of that larger master plan and that for the safety of the firefighters and for their comfort, that was one that either had to undergo some massive renovations or just be torn down altogether. Thank you.
I know they're looking at right now Station 2 and 8 for the same issues. They're also in pretty bad shape, and at some point, the cost of renovating that versus just building new, that's what they're discussing right now. So I'm hoping with our next kind of Q2 report, we'll have some more updated information about that, but there's a chance that both 2 and 8 will just have a new station versus renovating just based on cost.
Councilmember Spatafor.
I did have a question, and maybe it's too nuanced for today, but is property value growth contributing to a stronger buying power of the bond we authorize? Is that a factor in there?
I have a whole presentation about it, just yet.
Oh, okay. Okay. I won't spoil your surprise then. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the council, may I ask, I mean, sending out a written report quarterly right now until we kind of get into the real nitty-gritty, is that sufficient? You guys are obviously welcome.
I believe so.
Okay. Okay. Well, we'll continue to-
If I hear something different from council members, we'll let you know.
Okay. All right. Moving on then to the financing, there is a bound book in front of you guys. Yep. So one of the things we were able to do with this process of passing the bond was go back out for basically a rating increase, what we were trying for. So the mayor and I met with two different rating agencies and really just pitched Lansing, kind of all the great things that were, I'm sorry? Sorry, closer. So we were able to meet with both S&amp;P and Kroll and really pitch Lansing on all of the things that are happening, whether it was our tax base or economic development or just some financial information. So this is the deck that we prepared for the rating agencies. So we met with them about two or three weeks ago or so. We were really hoping, at the time, S&amp;P had us at an A minus with a negative outlook, which was pretty typical for most municipalities through the pandemic. Just everyone was so uncertain and revenues were so volatile that they gave most folks a negative outlook. So that wasn't terrible back then, but of course, when we were going back out to the market for $175 million, if we can increase it, we wanted to try. So with that, we did receive a positive rating from them. We went from a negative to a stable outlook, which is great for us. And Kroll came in at a double A negative with a stable outlook as well, so that those were both very positive ratings for the city. We should definitely take pride in the fact that we were able to increase our rating right before we go out for this issue. You guys can read through most of these slides. A lot of them are on economic development. I'll just, I'll quickly just touch on a couple of the highlights that I think we really impressed the rating agencies by, things that we should really brag about. Under tab E, I'm going to start here on slide 12. One of the things here you'll see is just a quick picture, a quick chart here that just shows our taxable value year over year has been a very consistent 5% or more in some years. And so, of course, going out to a rating agency showing that we're very stable from a property tax perspective is really solid for folks to want to invest in our city. So that was a really powerful chart, I thought. Slide 22 kind of goes with that. It looks like fifth column in here, the percent of tax collection, we're near 100% tax collection, which some cities, of course, are not able to do that. And so this was also very impressive that not only do we have positive revenue growth, we're also able to collect what we're putting out, which I think is, again, a very powerful statement to show our stability and growth. Is there a question?
I'm sorry. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. So 100%, you're saying that there's 100% of the taxes collected that are supposed to be collected, the city income taxes?
Yep. So the middle column here shows where we're at. Of course, delinquent property taxes go to the county, but we're able to collect on our own 99.9 or 8.9 in some cases every year.
Okay. I thought that we were having an issue with uncollected city taxes, but you're saying that we're pretty much at 100% collected?
Property taxes, yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Income, you're thinking.
I'm thinking income.
Income.
I apologize.
Oh, no, that's okay. Slide 25 here. One of the unique things, and I know our finance director can also share with you updates on this, but with the state passing their budget and offering municipalities with a funding ratio of less than 60% for our pension programs, our ERS system, of course, back in '21 came in at about 56.3%, which allowed us to be able to go out for that grant from the state Department of Treasury. It's due June 15th. I don't want to put our finance director on the spot, but I know she's working on it and it might already be done, but I know we're trying for it. It's going to be between $11 and $12 million is what we were estimating to help us close that funding ratio gap. So that's excellent for the city. That means both of our systems, at least for '21, would have met that 60% funding ratio. Of course, in '22, valuations were not so great. Rates of returns were pretty awful. We wish that they would take '22 data, but instead, they're making us use '21, which we'll take. It's still an extra potential $12 million to the city that we otherwise wouldn't have. So the rating agencies, of course, looked on that very favorably, that we were able to close that gap and increase our funding ratio on our pension systems.
And just to clarify, that 12 million isn't going to the city. It's going into the retirement fund, which will be reinvested.
Thank you. And then lastly, on slide 26, this was really the work that we did back in 2020 with the This was really the work that we did back in 2020 with the creation of the new CSO position. The city spent a lot of time working on healthcare reforms and kind of streamlining services. This slide just shows that between pension and OPEB, we saved about $400 million in one year, which was tremendous. And that really speaks to the work of HR and finance and the administration to get, and council, of course, to get all of this work done. The financial health team, of course, was instrumental in all of this. We really went through and bid out all of our plans. Everyone was able to maintain the same level of benefit or better and still achieve savings just through administrative changes, which is exceptional. So this also was a big win for us to be able to brag to the rating agencies that we take our legacy debt very seriously and we have made changes. So this was, this was a big win for us. I really wasn't sure going into it where we would be, especially, you know, they're not looking favorably along around a lot of municipalities and and ARPA dollars and and just the concern of of kind of what's happening next with, you know, people still figuring out how this pandemic is going to pan out. So we were really nervous going into this, potentially seeing what we could do to increase our our rating. So we were very pleased that it came back so positive. So so that's what I had. Any questions specifically on the deck or River Caddis, police and fire mileage?
One question I want to ask you before we move on, and that has to do back with the public safety building. We want to make sure, you know, since this is our project, that we're going to be getting prevailing wage and local local units that that will be, have an opportunity to bid on this. So where are we in looking at at that information?
I believe in all of our development agreements, we specify prevailing wage as what we would do for any development. As far as local labor, we haven't bid out the the specific construction folks yet or folks that would be doing that service. Certainly, we would follow all of our city purchasing requirements and everything that we've done in the past. We have no, no need to deviate right now, and I know we've budgeted for additional costs for those.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Garza.
Thank you. I would just, I guess, ask you to please, when you do the prevailing wage rates, to make sure that they're up to date, because from my understanding, the state of North, we're quite a bit out of date.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I think that, and and as as we're looking through future, you know, budgetary needs and priorities, I think one of the things that we need to look at as an administration is a position that monitors these development agreements, making sure that the folks who have signed these agreements or who are reaping the benefits of some of the incentives that the City of Lansing has given them, that they are in fact doing what they say they're going to do. I I was just at a conference about a month ago where one of the states, they have a, you know, one of the cities has a person whose main job is to go back through these development agreements and make sure that there is compliance and that there is language in the development agreement, something we might need to think about that, you know, has a clawback provision that if, you know, they they're found not to be in compliance, X, Y, and Z can happen. I know on some of the federal funding, that's kind of a deal breaker with some of the federal agencies. But as we're looking at this and as we're hearing some of the horror stories, I think that we need to make sure, as a city government, we need to make sure that folks are doing what they say they're going to be doing and that if they're required to do prevailing wages and to use local labor, that they're, they are in fact doing that.
I I think if you go back to the tape when Mr., when Price Dobernick was here, one of the concerns, and I think all of us voiced it up here as well, was the fact that these are self monitored.
Right.
They self-report. So we don't know whether the information that they're giving us is accurate or not. Along with the fact, I think, some of these contractors, and I know Vice President Garza could probably speak to it better, end up doing contract positions and and so they're not paying, they're not paying income taxes and that, they're leaving that up to the employee to do it. Because they're not considered employee, they're doing 990 forms on them. And, you know, when you look at the amount of building and the things that we are doing in the community, that's great. But part of what sells that to council is the fact that they project what we'll be getting from income tax and and other things. And when we're not getting that, then it defeats the whole purpose.
Right.
Councilmember Garza.
Thank you. Yep. So I appreciate you saying that, Carol. And that is one of the things. I know income tax may be, you know, a small amount, but with all the development we do have going on in the city, I mean, that obviously adds up.
Oh, yeah.
And just one last question. I'm not going to let you leave without a tough one. So could you please, I know that your your position is kind of split right now. Could you tell me how, tell us as council, how much time is devoted for your CSO position?
On any given day. I mean, I I think for me, when I think about what a CSO should be doing, and in the past, it was focused on pension and OPEB. You know, this time around, it's really been more on revenue growth and and doing economic development fits right into that. So yes, I have some other duties that I I help administration with, but I do focus the majority of my time on development. I've I've spent, I'd say probably at least 60 or 70, you know, percent of my time every week either working on on this deal or the backend for Ovation, same thing, negotiating those contracts. We're also looking at a new city hall, right, that we eventually need to move out of. So those types of of connections that I'm making also with the school district for different partnerships and things that we could do for either a shared building or shared facilities, things like that. So I think although it might look a little different than the first time I was here, I'm not just kind of coming in and cutting. I really focus more on the the growth side. I I still classify that as kind of strategy officer type work. So I'd say the majority of my time is still around doing that.
Okay, I appreciate that. Is there, just one more, one more question, I guess. Now, when we talk about unfunded liability, is there talks, because I know a lot of departments have been shrinking and we've been contracting those services out, and when we contract those services out, they're not putting into the unfunded liability, they're not paying into the pension. So that pyramid, so to speak, with a nice base, is turning upside down with more people collecting than there are people putting into it. Is there any thought of putting back money back into the forestry? So it's not just a crew and it's more of a department and so on to other departments?
Has has there been talks recently or would we consider doing that?
Are you, are you, yeah, are you considering doing that? Or, I mean, because in my opinion, when you keep contracting these services out, it's not beneficial to the 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 unfunded liability, the retirement plan. And then, you know, when somebody, let's say, that gets hired on now, is that pension system going to be there when they retire? Because we're not, you know, keep putting into it.
I think we have right now both of our plans, and I'm pretty sure it's in our deck here, but I'm pretty sure we're 80% funded in both of our systems around 2035. So there hasn't been as much of a push on the pension side. Now, OPEB is kind of a different story. I think to to your point of are we considering hiring more employees versus contracts to help with our our unfunded liability? I don't think that's been a focus as of late. Not that we wouldn't consider it. I know there were lots of talks about how do we provide services the most efficiently and are there ways to do that? And certainly that would come into our financial analysis of what made sense, not just from a today's budget standpoint, but of course, long-term liabilities. But that hasn't been something on my my forefront or my radar as of right now. Certainly, it could be if we start exploring different services that we want to provide and how do we provide those most efficiently.
Okay, thank you.
Before I go to Councilmember Spitzley, Shelby, have you been working with finance at all? I mean, we kept hearing during the budget process that there was a plan and that you were working on a plan. So can you give us any idea what that, what that is, what it's shaping up to, you know, where?
Sure. Yep. So we've met a handful of times, the finance team, the mayor's been there also, and tried to talk about different ideas that we could do. I think first things first, I know we were trying to just, you know, get through this year's budget before we start talking about a multi-year budget. But one of the things I think became pretty clear during even the the Q3 budget report is that when we do our budgeting process, we budget for every position to be filled for the entire year. So starting July 1, we would be fully staffed and run through the whole year. And what's been happening, especially after the pandemic, our hiring levels are not what they were, right? So I think if we really spend some time figuring out what our structural deficit is, if we have one, how much it is, I think that's probably the first question that needs to be answered before we start talking about what to cut. Not that we we shouldn't have any of those conversations as well, but I participated with a handful of meetings where we were kind of putting those ideas in writing on paper. I believe the mayor wants to share those potential options with council to to deliberate on and see if anybody else has any opinions about, you know, what we could be doing or should be doing.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. That's part of my question that I had. I mean, as a chief strategy officer, you know, and I and I was here when the when the resolution was drafted, but I but I think that I I get what you're doing with development and the contracts and stuff, and that is very important. But you you also talked about financing from a budgetary standpoint, and so that brought to me the question of, you know, as a chief strategy officer, you know, you know, are you intimately involved in the budget negotiations and the budget discussions? You know, as part of being, you know, looking for those, you know, efficiencies, are are you looking at the departments and seeing where there can be these efficiencies, whether it's, you know, and and I don't, you know, these open positions that have been open for multiple years, looking at them and seeing whether or not it makes sense for that position to stay open or does it make sense for it to morph into something else? I I'm really curious, you know, as we as we look at this and as the mayor brings recommendations back to council, I think that we need to look at, you know, how we are, you know, how the departments are doing their part in addressing the structural deficit. And again, you know, we we talk about it every year, that these positions, and there are a lot of positions that have been open multiple years. And so, you know, for them to just be a placeholder or, you know, do we need to look at whether or not the requirements for the position are too high and we may need to, you know, redefine the position description? I don't know, but I I'm just curious as to what your role is in developing the budget as the chief strategy officer.
So I haven't been a part of the budget process. That's not been this focused my time here. So my my first time around, of course, I was finance director and CSO, so it made more sense. But but now we have a finance director, so I don't, I don't say I don't have to do the budget, but there's a person there that's able to do the budget, and so that hasn't been my my focus. When I, what I can say is, you know, things like going out for our rating agencies, obviously, I work hand in hand with our finance director and the rest of the finance team to put things together to go to go pitch these things. So I do feel like we've been able to tag team some of the the big picture finance things. However, I have not been a part of, you know, the spreadsheet work or the budget creation focus of of this budget this year.
You're welcome. Are there other questions? Any other questions? Seeing none, we want to thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
And we will move on into the agenda. The next item that we have before us is the budget amendment for fiscal year 2023, 2024. As council remembers, part of the discussion during the that came up after passage of the budget, there was approximately $1.9 million that had not been allocated. There were some departments that had been, their operational budget had been cut down to zero. And in the memo that you have in front of you from our internal auditor, you'll see the different departments that will be restored in their operating budget, utilizing the $1.9 million. And then part of the requirement and the reason that we're doing this is that according to the charter, we have to have a balanced budget. And even though the Uniform Budgeting Act allows us to have appropriate, us to have revenues that haven't been appropriated, the charter does require that we utilize and make sure that those dollars have been allocated. And with that, Emily, did you want to add anything?
I think you've covered it, but I'm but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Emily? Okay, I think in order to have any other discussion, we'll move to Vice President Garza to move the resolution.
All right, thank you, Council President. So I move the budget amendment for fiscal year 2023, 2024. And like Council President Wood said, this is for reappropriate those funds that the departments took up, operational cuts. So and this is not for personnel. With that, I would move the budget amendment.
All right, we have a motion. Are there any questions? Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I do recall that parks took quite a hit on operating. Can someone tell me where that is restored here in this budget?
There is not with the 1.9, but there is money in the operating currently to start off July 1. And then the mayor is going to bring us, we have the quarterly report that's July, September, October. So in October, they will bring us another amendment that will look at the dollars from the vacancy factor that will then put into other operating budgets that that had cuts taken to them.
Is is Parks the only department that's not having?
No, everybody, all departments except police, fire and public, police, fire and public service were the only ones that didn't take cuts.
Oh, yeah, I know what you're talking about. Yeah. Yeah, I saw that. Thank you. And then my last question, I saw that, thank you. The last question is, I know that when we were here and we voted on the budget, there was talk about, you know, a plan to address the structural deficit, and you touched upon it a little bit. And I know that you guys are having those discussions too in Ways and Means, I think.
Desiree is here. Would you like, Desiree, could you please come up?
I'd like to, like to know, are we, Ms. Freyer talked about internal meetings with folks. Are you having external meetings with experts as well? And what's the status of this structural deficit plan?
We have not had any external meetings. We've had internal meetings with department heads and with the mayor and with Shelby. No one outside of the city as of yet.
And then I think Councilmember Spatafor.
To your point too, today in Ways and Means, it was a very preliminary discussion, but we had Ms. Linden speak about some of the efforts that she's been having. And then the plan from the Ways and Means Committee is to work with some of the folks at this table and others within the city. We're going to bring the financial health team, folks back in to talk with us.
That's what I wanted to hear.
And then our goal is to have, to go with our budget priorities in October, some recommendations that you all can vet as a committee as a whole.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Also with this, because it is an amendment, you, we can divide the question because there's money going to EDP as well as HRCS. So we can divide the question on this. And it's a six vote item. Councilmember Spatafor.
I would just, I know you've mentioned parks. I just want to point out too, as we do look at amending the budget with carryforwards, our courts are significantly underfunded. I know the city clerk has expressed some concern about being able to carry forward the presidential primary without restoration of operations. As we are looking at the amendment with the carryforwards for next year, just please keep those in mind. I know those are at least a couple of things in addition to parks and some of the other other services that we provide, but those ones hit hit the top of mind because they do interact with the public the most. So just wanted to flag those too.
All right. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. This probably will end up as a question, but it's just going to start with, so when I look at all of the the departments that's getting refunded or filled back up for their operating budget, I'm like, okay, fully restored, okay, okay, partially fully. But I am concerned that Parks and Rec is not on there, because if there was one that I would choose to have on there for sure and then work on the other ones, it would be Parks and Rec first and then work with the other ones as far as carryforwards or a future amendment, because I would hate to have we do this, we're all like, okay, and I probably won't vote for unless I have a confident feeling that Parks and Rec will be one of these top ones by the time it's said and done. But I would hate to have it where something happens where it's like, well, we got to cancel the basketball season because city council did this. And here, our chance now, we could put some of it back in Parks and Rec, so that doesn't happen. But I know there's a lot of need. My priority would be to see that Parks and Rec gets it, so that's probably why I can't support it unless, again, if you can explain that carryforward and how Parks and Rec gets to be fully restored, like some of these other ones are fully restored.
Just, just to clarify, first of all, this came from the mayor, so it's voting it up or down. We can divide the question. We cannot change where we want the money to go. This has to be done before the end of June, and the reason is, is because we have to have that, the balanced budget before the end of June. And it has been my understanding that, you know, we do have the potential of carryforwards that that will be coming for us and we can ask questions about about that when that comes. But it's been my understanding from the mayor that we will be putting money back into Parks and Rec from the vacancy factor. We have two quarters that will be doing, the potential of doing that in, and that's the first and second quarter. So having said that, I think Emily wanted to say something, then I got Councilmember Spitzley and Councilmember Spatafor and Councilmember Hussein.
Yes, thank you. So is this working?
Is it on?
No, it's not.
It's, it's on, it's not working.
Sorry, but, oh, now this one's working. So I know finance is here too, if they want to speak to it more. So, I know finances here too, if they want to speak to it more, but as President Wood said, I think the goal of the administration was to have every single department be fully operational for the first two quarters, and then, like President Wood said, bring us an amendment that would do the rest, like Parks and Rec and the clerk's office and all of those. If you look at the Parks and Rec budget that passed, it is taking major cuts, but it is also fully operational for the first two quarters, and that's why that decision was made, but also if anyone from finance wants to speak to it, they are, their numbers, so, but.
Councilmember Spitzley, Councilmember Spatafor, Councilmember Hussein, and then we'll get to Desiree. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you for explaining the 1.9 and the carryforward. I agree with you, Councilmember Jackson, particularly since the rhetoric that's out in the press is that, you know, the parks are going to take this big hit, and, you know, council's doing this, and it's, you know, you need to call council because parks are going to be taking this big hit. So, I agree with you that, you know, the parks, it's a big deal. I don't know why it wasn't restored to some extent in the 1.9 million, particularly since, you know, that's all we've been hearing in the press is that, you know, the parks are taking such a big hit and council cut parks. That's the first thing. So, I still am and I continue to be concerned about the structural deficit and the rhetoric that's still out there about how this budget came forward and how parks has been cut. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spatafor and then Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, I just wanted to thank Emily. I was going to offer that explanation that you gave us in Ways and Means today for the two quarters. I think that makes some sense. As you recall, back to the 15th, I was pretty opposed to most of these operational cuts, but I think this is a good step forward to kind of putting us on the right foot to put them back, but a number of these departments took a, like, nearly 100% cut, so they didn't have any dollars to operate for any quarter for next year, assessing is one of them. So, I think this is a good first step in trying to right-size both the cuts and also the operations, so I wanted to say that too. And I think the point that parks has enough money to get through the first two quarters knowing that we'll have amendments. I did speak with the administration, with President Wood and the internal auditor about more regular budget amendments going forward next year so that we have a better idea what we're spending and when we're spending it during the fiscal year instead of when the budget is put together in February. So, I think these steps that we're taking are going to make us a little bit more informed as we go into next year's budget cycle. So, thank you for all of those of you that are helping make that a reality.
Councilmember Hussein and then Desiree.
Sure, so most of my questions have actually been asked. I don't see Treasury NIT on here, so I would assume that we're good through the first two quarters for those departments as well. Okay, that's the first thing. And then the second thing is, you know, I kind of want to piggyback on Councilwoman Spitzley's comments. I have now had to, in public meetings where we have cabinet members essentially attend and in committee meetings, which are also public meetings, we've had to kind of beat back this idea that's being, I think, put forth by the administration that the sky's falling. When we passed the amended budget, we were very clear that we had a plan. It was a plan that was agreed upon by the mayor as well as Carol Wood to back dollars back into operational budgets in a number of different ways. And so, it was never a situation where these departments were not going to be able to operate, period. And so, I hope that as we move forward, we're a little bit more responsible in our communication. I literally in a committee meeting just last week had to completely shut down a conversation because somebody was saying that we weren't going to be able to put gas in cars with regard to economic development and planning, so we need to be a little bit more responsible with that. Thank you.
Ms. Kurt Glenn.
I was just going to really agree with our internal auditor, what she said is correct. We looked at the departments and said, do they have enough to operate the first couple budget, first two quarters, and then we went from there, first funding the two departments that had zero operation assessing in the attorney's office, and from there adding on. But again, our goal is to come back before you all on the first quarter and say we need additional funds or with some suggestions as to what we can do with other departments also.
It's Councilmember, Vice President Garza, and then Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, and I appreciate you coming down to the well for us as well, Desiree. So, seeing how you said you're going to come back in the first quarter, could you please provide us with an update of how many unfilled positions, vacant positions there are, and as well, also let us know if those pays have been increasing over the years that they haven't been filled? Because I don't want this to turn into like an incentive to not fill those positions so we can backfill into the operational budget.
Sure, I'm going to ask Jackson to come down with that information. And also from our, as Shelby alluded to, one of the things that we're looking at since we know that we're not 100% fully staffed is to really look at a budget strategy to where, where we look at, where we're actually budgeting from an actual standpoint. How many positions that are actually employed right now? How many people do we actually have employed right now and budget from that standpoint so we don't have these big vacancy factors? And our numbers are way out there, and then we come back and do budget amendment or spread those numbers out. So, that's one of the strategies that we are definitely looking at. Jackson can tell you how many positions we actually currently have.
Well, I would also just encourage you that just because there is a paper person, a position that hasn't been filled, doesn't necessarily mean that that department is running without that person. What it's meaning is that I'm paying overtime or the job isn't getting done. So, I want, you know, just so that we're not willy-nilly cutting positions because it hasn't been filled, that does not make any sense.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to sound like we were cutting anything. We're not cutting anything, and we're definitely taking into consideration overtime and all the other factors in that also when we look at personnel costs. What we're actually doing is looking at actual personnel costs over the last five years, looking backwards to saying, what has our trend actually been? And in personnel costs is overtime, contractors, and all of those things are taken into consideration. So, didn't mean to sound like that.
Okay, thank you. Jackson, you had something to say?
Yeah, just going off Council Vice President Garza's point, with that Q1 budget update, it also comes with the vacancy factor report that has a list of all the vacancies in the city, and we will provide that to you.
I think he wants to follow up on that, Vice President Garza.
Yeah, so when you do that, I'd appreciate if you could maybe, so we all know as council that those positions are comparable to other municipalities in the area, so like if we're hiring, let's say, an electrician for instance, you know, let's say their base pay that we're offering is $39,000, and East Lansing has the same position available for $69,000. I want to make sure that they're not low, you know, underfunded positions, and that's why they're not being filled.
Okay.
And now, Councilmember Jackson, after the back and forth, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Just really quickly, so I appreciate the logic behind why some are funded and some aren't at this point, especially trying to make it through the first two quarters, but then I think, okay, if we're trying to make it through the first two quarters, then why are some fully restored, which would take it through the full year, and then still Parks and Rec has to hang on with its two? So, because I have a choice, that's probably why I won't support it, just because I want to see Parks and Rec now, I don't want to have to open pray about it later, especially when we're taking some all the way to the finish line, and I just want to see Parks and Rec get there. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Councilmember Cost, sorry about that, I was going to say Councilmember Ryan, Councilmember Cost.
Thank you, President Wood. I'm sorry, so was there a vacancy number that you had just then? I wasn't sure if you gave us a number.
For Q3, I believe, the general fund vacancies, I believe, was around 80 full-time positions? I'd have to double-check that.
Because I have on here the job opportunities in the city right now. Most of these are temporary or seasonal jobs, there's 27 listed. So, I wonder maybe if we're not advertising jobs quick enough to fill those positions, especially when there's only 27 listed here, and most are, again, seasonal or temporary. The other thing is, I was at a meeting last week of ENO with the mayor, and he had mentioned that there was going to be $10 to $20 million in a vacancy factor, carryforward. Is that an accurate number?
That was from our third quarter, our update that we provided to you all, and I think you have that, but I think we had, I don't know if it was all vacancy, 10, no, it wasn't, it was total where we were from the budget.
It's nowhere close to 10 to 20 million.
No, oh, no, no, I'm sorry, no, nowhere near to 20 million.
Okay, that's what he said, 10 to 20 million.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get clarification, because that was the number that was out there.
No, not at all, not at all, sorry, thank you.
Okay, all right, I appreciate the clarification.
Okay, other questions?
Just real quick. Shelby, while we have you, and I get the percentages in terms of police and fire and ERS for both pension and OPEB, we were at some point, you know, it was some 800 million or maybe more than that, and there is a reference in here that we are down 344 million. Can you give me an exact number right now?
Yep.
Just for my notes.
On slide 26.
Is that there?
It is, yep, so right under pension, RAL was down by 49.1 million from 2020 to 2021, and OPEB was down 344.4 million from 2020 to 2021, on slide 26 here.
Yep, so I know what is down. It's down 344, right? Is it down to 344, or is it down 344?
Nope, we were at about $1 billion, and now we're at about 600 million.
600 million, that's what I was looking for. Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, I would first move to divide the question and vote first on HRCS, and I would move to be recused.
You got a motion to recuse, Councilwoman Carol Wood? All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes.
Okay, we have the HRCS funding. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. Councilmember Spitzley.
As I have for the past eight years.
Pardon?
As I have for the past eight years, I'm asking to separate out EDP and to be recused from that budget.
We're pulling out EDC, Economic Development and Planning, and Councilmember Spitzley is asked to be recused. All those in favor of recusing, Councilmember Spitzley, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, passes. And so, for the Economic Development and Planning, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously, well, with the recusal, excuse me, with the one recusal. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Okay, one recusal and one no vote, so it still passes. Now, for the rest of the budget resolution, with those two that have been removed, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? It passes 6-2. Okay, that takes us to our council budget. This is informational for you. One of the things that we did, Emily and I and Sherry worked on, we had to reduce our budget. It is number D that you have in your packet. Our original budget was $250,910, and in order to make the adjustments that were made to the council budget, along with the $38,000 that was taken out for Zoom and for hiring an employee for a part-time position for the Office of Media, we had to reduce our budget to $115,609. So, this is the way it looks currently for July 1. We are looking at carryforwards. If those carryforwards do happen, we're looking at adding an additional $15,000 to our budget, which would bring up your council member accounts to the current level. It would bring up community funding to, was it 6,000? Pardon?
Yes, 5, 6,000, so it would be, so it would, yes, 2,600.
Yeah, okay, if we do, if we do the carryforward, it would bring up the community funding to 6,000, and it would also bring up promotions to 7,000. So, that's what we're looking at, but right now, this is it until we go through carryforwards. I realize that council members utilize their funds to help their neighborhoods and things like that, and I, we understand that, but we had to make cuts. It was extremely important from our perspective to make sure that we had telephone and IT, and that was because you as council members need your telephone and you need your, you don't need your telephones, your telephones and your computers, so we wanted to make sure that there was enough funding in there to take care of that. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. So, let me get this straight. We had a FY '24 proposed budget of $259,010.
In operating, yes.
Yep, and the budget that we're going to adopt is approximately $115,609.
That was the budget that we adopted.
And then we're going to have a carryover of additional $15,000?
Just $15,000.
All right, so still quite a budget cut from Lansing City Council. All right, just wanted to check that. Thank you.
Yeah, this is what we approved when we passed the budget in May, but we had, when it goes into operating, it's just one line. We had to then go through the line item and move the dollars around so that it equated that, and that's how we figured it out. Okay? All right, there's no questions on that. I don't see anything else on the agenda, so we are adjourned.